Mr. Smith.
Thank you all for coming to tonight's meeting. It's five o'clock. Let the record show that Councilmember Adams and Mayor Proton is not present. We will now start off with invocation by Mr. Don Smith and the pitch of allegiance by Mr. Segaro.
Lord, thank you for all you do for us with your help in as possible. And Lord, we need your help. Israel has major problems and needs your continual help. Our country has way too high here in the city, thinking some days be a worrying attitude. Lord, your help, this issue should be addressed and solved. In day three, amen.
Thank Mr. Smith and Mr. Segaro. Let the record show that Mayor Proton is present. We have some rounds on zone. Okay. Thank you. Now, I would like a motion to approve the except for R three dot zero. Uh, my system's not okay. Anyway.
Make a motion to the new ball of PR at twenty three dot two seven forty four weekend in January twenty twenty four.
Second motion. Okay. You go back to the original motion so, uh, Adam, take it correct. Councilmember.
Yes, sir. Show me a motion approved there through the model of PR at twenty three dot two seven forty scheduling January twenty four.
That's in that motion. Thank both. Labor, yes. All of those? No. One thing care six zero. I'm secretary. This is mission.
D R three three eight, Creighton Bell County City Check.
Thank you. Commissioner Minor and Commissioner Lynn. Oh, okay, sir. I think you've come in here.
I guess I'm the commissioner.
Uh, okay.
Mayor Council, thank you for having me. Mr. Ke, your sister lecture for Bell County. It's always a good year for me because it all says that I have to place fees taxes throughout the year with a small section of transportation codes. Hey, can get some of those fees back in. This is a good cause for fifty. So last year, we collect dollar fifty last this, uh, twenty three, which is November thirty. We collected dollar fifty on redriving three hundred ten thousand forty six vehicles across county, uh, continuing to red but three thousand two. State law says, uh, we have to strip these funds that we collect all fifty fee to all the municipal population, and we take the population all since, uh, most current between twenty twenty. So my presentation is that long, gonna read a paragraph for you and then gonna handle a check and then turn it over to the commissioners for the next check. As outlined in the transportation code after five dot four, the county tax assessor collect hazard fee with approval permission court levy additional dollar fifty per corporation excluding those exempted by code, and those that are exempted by code are your farm tax disabled vets. The funds are required for existing crossing guard programs. Places where school districts have a crossing program must be located to initiate to promote safety, health, nutrition, then include support for abuse prevention intervention as well as an alcohol abuse prevention. Ordinarily, those can be registered for programs and split safety and as per Article one oh two thousand four G, but criminal procedure. The debt for this allocation for code is one hundred seventy two thousand, one seventy two thousand eight hundred sixty six dollars fixed. But if this, uh, result in cleaning it, it's a district. And that concludes my presentation and our city manager in two ten.
Present presentation. Thank you.
The commission will be presenting back next.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Good evening, Council, uh, Mayor, uh, Harrison. I represent the hotel tab that was collected for the last year in the amount of ninety thousand five four dollars and seventy five cents, uh, be presented to the city manager. As you know, the, uh, um, Bell County and believe the city will be doing return donations as we're here next probably, so I would anticipate this, uh, up here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Citizen comments on agenda items. You have been to speak and count you have one minute allotted to respond if you choose. Michael Forino. Do you have four minutes?
With regard to the veteran's area, I have every faith and confidence that you would be presenting his pitch tonight for your discussion approval. However, I caution you as you give us these records, they over things such as the for Adam Carol and other things looking at the case of the clean city. I caution you all with honor and respect that this facility centers any less of a history tracker. If by the wayside, it's overgrown, neglected, it look like snow ash or away resources of manpower to move around city, that'd be beyond offensive. I just caution warn you all not to let that again, the gentleman to us have everything on the side with multiple occasions. They face, hey, and I have zero issue with his presentation. I'm reiterate the fact that the city does not have the trade when it comes to the care of certain facility systems. If this app bear that reside reside over one of the largest vending units in the world combat otherwise, so we'll tide that let that program or even allows it to look like it's lacking where the culture that the people in this room have friends, love ones who lay on peace and have granted that honor that's granted to us. That's all I say. I'd look at it, try to not at the fall by that.
Thank you. Mr. Smith. Good afternoon. You have four minutes.
Just to keep you know, if you should cancel on the presentation of the hotel motel occupancy, even though it's on the agenda. Uh, as far as the veterans of territory, I did have the opportunity to speak to Representative Hacks, uh, Lindberg, and I am very excited and encouraged speaking the first comment to them, whereas that I have seen echoed quickly by forums, she's the concern about the care and ends of veteran cemetery, especially when you look at the community that the upkeep of that is not done. Uh, they have assured that there are checks and balances, and really they're still willing to call for it. There are employees that are maybe working for land board during the city cleaning shirt, uh, that give these people an opportunity to be eligible benefits, give them the opportunity to eligible retirement, give them opportunity for stability and to be able to plan a future. I think that is a great idea, and we need to be vicarious to make sure that we don't ever lose it. So right is going to be in chill and also making sure council member visit every once, make sure that it affects the county standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bates. Good afternoon. You have four.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is David. That's how I live in clean. But again, I greatly our mayor, council, city manager, and all citizens are making a great job this year. Our city is growing and thriving. By my, I appreciate all your great work in twenty twenty three, which we live here as tired. I've seen my regarding our central Texas state cemetery. I was concerned when I heard Dean taking responsibility with Terry. I and my veterans have been at the set the cemetery for since it opened. We're very proud of our vet and cemetery. We tend the unaccompanied veteran burials, annual re-slay, veteran day, memorial day activities, and other community events at cemetery. Sometimes just rudder cycles through the cemetery, pay respect to our comrades buried here, make sure everything is ordered. It's been by conference with city council member, Representative Brad Bucklesoff, for the much today about this proposed item. Dad, the internal agreement contract agent, at reading his time and feedback to council member, I feel more confident about the plan. If I read it correctly, it is a yearly contract. V L B is not just the cemetery. It will be a ownership between V L B and local unit houses. V L B will be all responsible for cemetery and Dean when he say they operations. If in the future he doesn't give money, city, the all right cemetery understanding is the contract would be void. Um, this is important because V L B, uh, gets a lot of budget legislation. Uh, the current budget by hand correctly is one three million. The current cemetery employee who are contract employees, not stem employees, which I suffice to know, will be capital, which is a really good thing for them. V L B buys funds for salaries and benefits. Please correct, I'm wrong about anything. Okay, it's good that means I can still read and comprehend government document. Uh, please remember going forward that all the families with loved ones in turn at the area, all the local veterans, organizations, local veteran group, keeping a close cemetery measure that our standard are maintained. Thank you for your service to clean Christmas and having you.
Mr. Best, that was a great summary of our S twenty three dot two one zero. Madam Secretary and Senator.
M N twenty three zero two nine.
Madam Secretary, I apologize. Do we have any more, um, one for citizen comments? If no, look. All right, thank you.
M N twenty three zero two nine, consent regular city council meeting of number twenty eight twenty three, R S twenty three zero, consider memorandum resolution in the event of quarter ended September thirty twenty twenty, R S twenty three zero, consider memorandum resolution wording number twenty four zero seven, non-tertiary concessions for rental leasements at the legal area, R S twenty three zero four, consider memorandum authorizing purchase library books and group services through Texas market court purchasing program for this twenty twenty three, twenty four, in and out of ninety thousand dollars, R S twenty two zero five, consider memorandum resolution seeing the victim of crime at Boca Crisis Assistance Program Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division, R S twenty three two zero six, confirm resolution refine expenditure related to the termination of Superman break allegedly in the seventy two thousand one hundred nine dollars, R S twenty three zero, consider memorandum resolution emergency mediations and testing for pain, disposal testing, rolling three by C G by in the one hundred three five thousand three hundred six dollars and ten cents, R S twenty two zero eight, consider memorandum resolution vacancy on Arts Commission and point member to the vacancy, R S twenty two zero nine, confirm resolution bringing up to ambient transportation L S.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion to approve under. Councilmember Adams.
Mayor, I move to approve incentive agenda extended.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Sir.
Thank you. All any session? All very solid policy. Mary six zero. Madam Secretary, resolutions.
R two, consider memorandum resolution to offer an interlocal agreement with the general and office at Rensen Board for the city of clean responsibility for cemetery management operations for the Texas event of Texas.
And Secretary Council, the presentation was presented last week, but Mr. K, uh, uh, you just vote few of everything. Um, just make sure the council don't want us to grab to the slide. We go through it. Okay, there was a little said, no assistance comment. Uh, can you really give an overview of any of that not, uh, being, uh, problems before Tuesday?
Yes, ma'am. I think may need to remember it's starting today that, uh, the general and the city remains ownership in control of the cemetery. You're a contractor. Their house maintain, uh, the cemetery and run rates out there, and, uh, they're fully compensating us for all our dirt and ender lost, and we're agreeing to, uh, set up national standards to maintain cemetery operations. And if either party fails, live up to the obligation, there's way to, um, in contract way, sidewalk's away immediately out how the operation be transferred to this one where their party didn't hold, didn't hold their end of obligation, though, yeah, contract, and it will see what we in front of you eight months and was corrected of that eight months. It's, uh, it's about point two one three, and we'll submit by every year, um, and we'll have insurance stayed about an annual basis, where between one point eight, nine million dollars, and, um, is responsible for all absolute miniatures over and all the stuff here's, uh, uh, under maintenance, uh, in fact that occurred state benefit of over thousand dollars, made out of very good, and, um, I think both your children, I think it was also said that the, uh, there were added about with my part of seven benefits, net pose to just take without any benefits, and I will be answering any questions you might have in the chat as well.
Thank you, Mr. K. Councilmember, do you have a question, sir?
I have.
Okay. Do we have any other question? Councilmember.
Yes, sir.
Back to you, Councilmember.
And, uh, because a lot of us, uh, we had, I know citizens had, this is big, but it's something that's near everybody's heart, and I know we all have a question, uh, but, uh, I think that overall and our managers kind of explain that overall the benefit is for the people that all work out there, and I know it's obviously letting realize that the boys up there getting the best of them, care of retirement, so I think having benefited turns a contractor to, uh, from a job to more a career, you know, you're gonna be there because, uh, among jetty. Uh, so, so my question is to the matter, if it's bringing on board and you got the benefit, let's say in third, we're not gonna redo that contract, we'll see that because if they got benefits and they like it, now they get taken care of.
Yes, sir. Well, either the state could hire their operator ticket over the mills in any case, uh, they can offer those jobs, um, they're out there now, which I'm sure that be their preference. Um, they can offer those jobs if they used to, if they want to. There are employees, also on each jobs that fit their, their build in the city. Uh, you see the report that we have, there we all have openings, uh, three positions, and, uh, it almost always have a five to ten percent vacant, so, um, there would be some abilities of jobs there if they're not employed with the state or the contractor.
And also we're able to provide a backup if you get over runners, and I know that type of a couple times we have to stay, but, uh, I'm not sure we're gonna add up enough sign, you got all this party overflow, that, so, and, uh, I think that cemetery has always, to me, from my perspective, it's been a community thing, it's just, uh, part of that, there's so many organizations about the volunteers, I think it's continued to be that, it's just the city's, the work of the deep, it's connected on being a whole community, all organizations that are out there keeping an eye on, you know, for us, you know, for you that you're like that, that, so for help, it's again to do great things.
Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Segaro, Councilmember, do you have a question or more?
I have two questions, Mayor. Uh, I guess first question is, I didn't really get this option during the presentation last, what happens, uh, we, uh, V L B, um, representative, what happens to the client, uh, the date's request, I can't even.
Bill, you wanna pitch out at that question?
Good. Mayor, Councilmember. Doctor, I'm glad you're there. Next, a veteran's program. I'm sure there's any question.
You're asking for the city to take over staffing operations of the state veteran's area. Uh, so what happens, uh, if the city says, oh, it's not a set request, um, this land see?
I do make a little longer explanation so you can understand where we are and why behind this. Uh, all the centers that should operate since this one thousand six, turn mission one thousand six, turn now nine, and our city operates by a veteran who specialized in cemetery operation, relationship with, but again, the salary in there two thousand and, and now in the middle of fiscal year, and very telling me, I'm not a contracted veteran, that might, we were presented by a meat of how do we carry our veterans, our families out there, and the answer was that we turn to this state agency. We have a contract with the standing, but you see, that's the folks that want the cemetery to do that work. Someone, I don't know exactly who traded it to, somehow good idea in twenty twenty, by the way, if local governments perform a function, and so we started out at their situation tests in August twenty twenty, we ended the contract with the city to do exactly what we're proposing with clean. So we're operating for three years now. Uh, I was just yesterday actually presenting, um, awards, our cemeteries, all four of our cities have won, and seventy nine point customers, and so want to recognize that we start a mission, uh, a year later, we bought board and wait sees count, provide service, and our cemetery service, and earlier this year on the total contract start, we see Abbling, exact same thing at the, at the same thing, so we have four cemeteries, three of ours have been doing it for quite a while. To directly answer your question, if you all said to this, we would continue as we are now with ten agency employees, man, that cemetery, and I don't dispute me fantastic job. Uh, as I said, our award winning customer satisfaction score, and that area actually just won excellence award, and national cemetery administrator, their inspection about a month ago. Uh, none of those things will change, uh, in transportation processes, policies, or we're back, we're asking you to do sort of workforce and daily operating supplies. Now, it gets restricted contract, but ultimately that we're asking you to. And in doing so, you saw the great employees out there who right now are just attempt agency employees with virtually no retirement, full debt toll, none of those benefits. We want to take care of our troops, so to further the concept, if you're a family member, someone in uniform, you understand the concept, we want to take the same thing. And so that's the idea behind what we're doing. We've been doing it for a while now, all across state, uh, our cemetery, we're building, we're having the city, they're running, if something works well, if you just say no, we can use the business as we're doing it now.
Thank you so much. My second question, I don't know if this is fair for you or for the manager, uh, I also was a budgeted item on stage it, and are all familiar with on the state mandate, um, obviously wrong contract, and, and, and there's money currently in place for this, um, but without some concern as to what happens if, if, uh, legislation or legislature does not provide the thing for its cemeteries, and happens then, obviously, uh, Mr. K, kind of chat that, uh, nothing else maybe add that.
Yes, if like since the one was a little too comment, we do not get state money to run this area. The V L B composed three program, veterans homes program, the veterans loans programs, we V L B act loan money for people buy home, to improve home or to buy in. When we give the veterans the loan, they actually pay it with small interest payments, lower than market rates. The interest that he repays will fund our city program, part of our home programs. We don't get any fat, therefore not subject to reductions, et cetera, limitations from legislature, because we generate those things, and we're so sorry, we generate from that loan.
Thank you.
Question, I have a mark. My question is the person who are doing your agency taking care, you have explained to them now job open, are going to apply. Is that what I understood you say?
Yeah, well, I haven't informed him yet, uh, for trying to say where this is gonna go before, you know, tell that they actually have the opportunity. My plan right to address twentieth of December, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna make decisions to make. Tradition is they want to get the city, do they want to stay with current agency contract, or do they have others in going somewhere? So in a week, research that to look at the city website, could benefits per the city, and I'm gonna ask that bar comes out the fourth of January, and answers any questions that they generate that one week period, and brief them on the packages and onboarding that he just wore. If we do that in fourth of January, it is a month until track kicks in on fifth of January, to get on boarded, uh, if there's issues, something else, the time to go and do things.
And I mark, I believe in our city staff, and I believe persons who are gonna be hired, as long as cemetery, veterans cemetery, we all go live in the middle of life, and to have time to work and sacrifice families, we not that cemetery go.
Man, thank you for that. I would just add that ultimately I am responsible for everything, but that's to our other state trinkets. I want to say that we have now, winning for what we do in deep.
Thank you, Mayor. Count member.
Mayor, it just a reminder that this is a regarded award wing, hundreds four acre veterans cemetery. Uh, council will shop that week, turn the schedule meeting, the, sort of the grounds of the, uh, become more familiar with what A because the responsibility in terms of the operation. On yesterday, spent nearly two and a half hours, not all two and a half hours, leading with team leadership and team who are the operations at the mayor. During my bid, I asked a lot of questions, hit a lot of listening, because it's important for me to understand the current operation as well as the core, it's a must have. And thank you, by the way, Mr. Buck, for transparency in that conversation we had yesterday. I just wanted to find that's, uh, to my for council, no six, sir, uh, late to my, uh, sav, let me foresee, the sav are dedicated, honorable professionals, period. The majority of our veterans and the passion of this work, and also, excuse me, and also a function, and often accept the opportunity to large roles in the organization, that's one thing I learned today. The operations, the current operations, structural lesson, bond at this point, I view the operational dashboard, which tracks what in bed, such as burial options, availability, daily tip, I want to about this, their annual satisfaction survey, triangle, B A inspections, general and all the odd self assessments, and annual performance views, level service, there to do service and reverence, which appears out to all existing, I said this, I noticed overall a heap of the grounds as well as my initiative and accessibility, and the sincerity in interacting with staff. There are the major projects that were recently completed, future phases of expanding the skin and state sections, how we will ninety five, the small ranch, across the shell state, so we can expect this, uh, remain consistent. Uh, to go out the cemetery vision, their experience, they've overseen and implement a lot of this operation over time. I realize I gear larger major, although of course I feel so confident things will stay up in line. In summary, I trust the ceiling be a perfect for the syntax state veteran cemetery, in providing needed benefits to a willing staff, they are meet a model of dedicated, every day for everyone, outlet for transition to city force. Newly, uh, charts, the C major, be to sustain the current base structure, provide council with routine briefs and situations, and ensure their veterans attach compliments in the city of clean uniform. With all that said, I make a motion.
Sir, before you make a motion, we have the player would speak.
Understood, and that will be discussion after the motion is made.
She may want to add question, but cut to the.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So that's taken to approve R S at two three dash two one zero.
I see.
Councilmember.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for the reasoning clarity you provide to our citizens and to the council as a whole, as well as what we do this. Um, quick question, uh, Mr. Are, are we fully, are they fully staffed currently? And so the event that we had to do need of recruiting, let's just say we had employees hired there that, um, is now secretly transitioning somewhere else, we're responsible at the point where recruiting and.
Yeah, man, just like you said.
Perfect. Okay. Um, to the comment that was made by one of our, our, um, you know, I just pause one of our systems, so I just want to echo the words in the first place, or you absolutely found, so there is, this may be both mayor and alder, and, and I'm here, I take it seriously, I'm a truly winner, probably take care of our own, literally, uh, folks that are working, folks that are interned out. I think for your service and, um, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman, as I was. Any more discussion? All in, yes, all opposed. Motion, Gary six to zero. Okay, Gary.
P H twenty three six six two, hold like Gary insert an order, Carol, we have a five one five three foul LLC, base number Z twenty three dash twenty six, to resume lots or in park lot one and three thirty, out of the original town for B five visitor to B C one, general this whole district, the academy of deeds, an administrative visiting ordinance by changing design of property point nine years, being lost for part of lots one and three, with thirties of clean original town for B five business district to B one general business out, providing a savings clause, providing for the peeling visions, providing for an update.
Councilmember favorite that last week with July hundred and again, it's. This is all. Melissa, you have four minutes. You have four minutes.
Good evening, Council. Quite often citizens are tasked for not coming up offerings that we support, and only may not think about that we do our source, so I would change that. I want to come in later. I highly support this, um, worker rights, known as these, uh, the, uh, fatty of this, that try to people not necessarily clean up all over. I also have always been community outreach, and there's, 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 there's a lot of other community cultural, uh, hall events that are free for intent, and this is a great to bring people, and this is a great to bring in the area, and a lot of the extension of having a reason, because there is some people that are interested in different, I really have to say, I don't want to go a whole time today, exploring, carding, asking support for this request for.
Thank you. Ronnie Russell, good evening. You have four minutes.
Good evening, City also, City Manager. Um, of course, I definitely agree with changing, uh, the father B C one, just like Miss Brian said, uh, there's a lot of new leaders down there, uh, we've had several meetings, uh, I think that makes it, because when you understand the nature of something that's happened, a new comment, I just did all that to counter, but I think it's coming down here, free news, they're just getting here, it's a transition environment for each person that are here, so all news can come to the end, it's gonna get downtown, I don't know where is new, the new downtown, the next is gonna be here downtown, so I is a parallel advertisement for what is on there, for restaurants that are current here, for new restaurants that are coming, uh, for the, the community that's down here, of course, we know it's already coming to the, the island, uh, not just the island, but also the outside, the same park lot since twenty nineteen, oh, new development coming up, um, it's also about a new, uh, bring hooking parking up the downtown area, so I ain't changed the, uh, B one is gonna be a huge compliment, uh, I've already changed decision, that's in, um, one, but all the transits in the clean that I'm gonna be down here, so it's a complete benefit for, uh, all districts. Thank you.
More comment. I'd like my motion. Very important on it for to make. This is standing soon of the city in our uptown, the business, the business you have, have, that's will all weigh in the deposit. Madam, ma'am, I'd like to move it to P H three zero twenty six.
Close book here. Oh, we repeat that, and it's like a motion.
I have a motion. We move to P H twenty three zero six.
Thank you. Roll down, catch some more. Please no. All of us, all of us. Motion, Gary, six to zero. Sitting time on agenda items. We have three minutes. Any jack? Good, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Clean City Councilman, Madam. I'm happy to be here. Thanks, so long awaited. I will give a bit on the clean hat board. So I'm grateful for the operative vibe that I get regarding the clean authority. I'm glad to share some letters from David Poller of the U S Department of Housing in San Antonio, eight December fifteenth. He takes gratitude for the House Board's leadership, obtain B K J board approval to transfer a housing to the program to the Texas legal, rising challenging situation inherent, uh, by the borders, uh, Mr. Poller committed to take action to B K J assistant camps. Um, it's a, your charity and cooperation are difficult process, I appreciate it. Um, but also, he also wanted to extend his appreciation to Senator Hayward, who is our operational consultant. She did such a full job, depending as anybody does with board, neither of us a housing HUD background. Uh, he did say that, um, transfer possibly be finalized January the first of twenty twenty four. Um, transfers will market in the page administration of a program salary out of the A J facilities, corporate roles, throw part of the first block properties that were vered of rent assist administration project based factors. Um, it is evident that K J used HUD funds for ineligible sentences, the exact amount of improperly used funds remain, um, said the eighth, uh, had a quad position, the general act on that word to support K J's HUD thing, K H A had also opted to reexamination, proper report HUD systems for some time. Uh, once it, uh, has reconducted the house's payment register, uh, will be able to determine the amount of funds that were spent on eligible activities, files out of K J's program will require an audit, date the amount of funds owed by K J to HUD.
Here, three answers.
May I request a minute? I'd like to say.
I say, yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, I would something for this out then, as it is out, saving and momentum, and necessary, adding more, uh, to HUD team who had act the entire way. Um, I would also give my gratitude to the city, uh, what they did is instrumental, are thankful it's over the two hundred dollars. Um, I would like to see for waiver and work and serve generated throughout this, and so I would think I bow down here for the support, allowing me to have a, as a citizen, and if to address this of hope, which ready in that advert, I would talk to the listening board members.
I will go on the book. Can't. This is what I'm doing. Look at that. Now, three minutes.
You can talk about the monster scenario, had said that count could potentially mean helping, uh, however, based on the subject that we're, I think the mayor being so quickly to place members, and I'm gonna leave that side in hopes that the board will be able to make progress on their own and have that available against the public, it's becoming an area you have to be, because of crime, uh, and only over there are places that are vacant, being, uh, wireless potential for not only cannot see, but fires, any else in it. Uh, and I'd like to go back to about the transparent information. Again, I noticed that it still says on the form, on the, that only the city of clean, horrible to talk during this, considering common portion, uh, that was made by the council that's motion, uh, staff is just to interpret in hidden of most, it is motion of our, uh, the mayor, the chairman don't get to interpretation either. I would request the council, uh, allow all members of the public to speak, as per the meeting act. Um, I'd also talk about the hostility, you know, I've watched the, hasn't been a whole lot going on, we're receiving attention coming out of all the process, uh, rules for a no reason at all. People paying attention, consider how they're reading, as they're being allowed themselves as they. I'm gonna have to call this, so, and, and really notice how long it's taking for the chair of sport to ask the count, not to pay attention. We're, we're trying, but then it shift the audience from Benildell. We would like to see that rated, and we would like to still see, uh, per council, President Chamberlain, next, to the next, to the next.
Your task.
Miss my councilman.
You have one minute.
If citizens are to a, to a, of a chrome, citizens actually request that the count adhere to and mode conduct that out yourself for yourselves.
Thank you. And Miss Jackson wants to say, you're welcome. We have our, not supposed to be advancing it, but you, you're, you're right. All right, um. Good, sir, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Council. I come here tonight, um, talking about my, this is not that bring, um, we have a side church called the Hebrew Church here in town, um, they haven't been any, uh, violence here, but they have violence in their states, Georgia, Missouri, Louisiana, um, and have here, uh, incident. We all have a group.
We have a group called, uh, can't use their, is there nothing around calling? They're talking about a remote test because inside the law. I don't know if it's poor or if it's, but we suggest don't. It's not an actress or Hamas or F entities, T C or, you know, in Austin, Texas university or Texas N M, here, Trump test in Israel. Um, as you look at this, it grabs itself the Black Prims group and advocates for, or racking white, I don't see myself as a blue eyed devil. Not that. Don't appreciate the mayor with a lot of folks, additions were made right here tonight, and been intended that person no more get to them, General Smith, but last week, specific individual caught and ripped. I get no, no disrespect to the gun, but I said we're tent to find a state and ideology and despite by the mayor is there and discarded me, I seek, because many pull a bite, and it started to piss me off. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Michael, please, sir, you have one.
As one of few people bothered to watch, probably the mayor, within the role YouTube, and once again, I need to get your attention, let the job be for Alex, the mayor, then he comes in. Say, oh, how wonderful, done good jobs. If you don't set great job, funny, you can respond, the great job are, oh, you're doing great job. I don't either. He prayed downtown, it didn't revolve. Saturday afternoon last weekend, I could use the, use the parking places, as a state in traffic, use money on trouble, go here and everywhere, aren't we the host city? The show fairies in, from the art center, dates and beer to Halloween, what, why are you in trouble there and everywhere? It's one argument of you all the time. You get for a sack, what do you want, to run your numbers? Oh. This change relationship that you have with the data, okay, you're concerned, example, example in front of me, I'm likely to just made it, and that's a way for you to accomplish it, okay? I'm scared. I've lasted in Puckers, all the way when you and Kelly Harold, that's what I get, Steve, yours is supposed to, that's the best you can. Since one October 2018, 1,008, two emails back through yourself and the clean day Harold, transfer see a bunch of ways 750 you want to see, because your current, the city is concerned that confidential information might be in there. They've got some, what permission would rest that they have it for? What the fless did you get? Can't even make contact me. You're a leader, lead by example, lead front, okay? I'm one for failure. Nobody can quantify curses. I'm in target, you treat every main stock, a little nailed, depends on the Harold, one conversation, a podcast, donation, not a leader, shared door with lust, curl, or stuff.
I have a question for mayor. I have a question for the, I just want clarity, is it the council sitting down here, from what we are doing, the comments, are we permitting our citizens to make allegations and attack the right to?
Question, is it personal, no personal shape, talking about civic?
Yes, ma'am, you said it briefly.
I think that's address and information, personal acts, nothing should be happening generally, I'm not setting that as far as how you smell about persons, um, all you are investing that as deep as that someone has said that they're dragging, ultimately that would be something that's also going inside what rules could be followed.
I wanted to ask you, in all recent, it remains protected, so you finish my question.
Thank you. Thank you, um, councilmember, and I know I'm supposed to say something, but my need to have a slide show, and just talk about, um, on an emergency cemetery, and, um, can remember the question? You know it's natural? I don't care. Just remember.
Okay. Good evening, mayor, council, I, I suppose I come in, have closed.
It's not, I have everyone. And I would keep you compared to you, uh, councilmember, Alvarez. Ms. Shirley? And y'all can speak at the back, close. I've got three minutes.
Shirley contact. And it may have somebody asking about extra minutes voted to remove. I'm speaking on county 28 of this year, only nine minutes in, and I thought, we were voted in by the people, not just six or seven people, in vote. Approximately 2,000 people haven't voted, and that is not a clean area of people. There was most, and so often, transference in our agreement. And so, as I say, this is a minimum of meetings that was so true, as to contact our opinions, as to give guidance, when it came time, councilmember, to discuss this. Approximately 91 minutes in, out. We have a citizen's petition, and then other people to speak on that. Last week, we had re-up people's, in quote, you right when you said you are not this item and not voting up, taking away a citizen's right to speak is exactly what you were doing. You do not have the right to let citizens comment, anyway. Something approximately nine minutes in, quote, we are to, we should be working on notices, we should be working on things that are truly going to move us forward and produce benefits and good outcomes for our citizens, in quote. I didn't hear anything about citizens one. Yeah, and the citizens ten. So as a, and I will, if you had citizens comments at the evil meetings recently, it had been the restriction of redents only, and the only reason that was added was to wash people continually asking for meetings to discuss membership that has been out.
Three minutes is up.
I need extra minute, please.
Counsel, you have an extra minute.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Asking for me is got misinformation that has been out there by the, now, this is not a sideshow or a circus, but for showing out, see if folks are not listening to citizens clean. I, you were put in O C to the extent of the red circle and you are supposed to be sending all the reds, but it appears you have owned us, do what you do. I believe you know what the citizens are telling you, and you just don't. So approximately 66,000 registered voters at their times, and every vote cycle.
Okay, thank you. You have three minutes.
I need to make sure I got a name for.
Madam secretary, determine this one.
Evening, mayor, councilmembers, Mr. Cale. Um, I just want everyone to know how much I've employed this Christmas parade, it's the best one I've seen in a long time. I think Mr. Cale will change it to the latter, because I knew all these entries were going to lit up, and they are incredible. I mean, when it's 4:30, you can see some lights. When it's 6:00, uh, people did awesome job decorating everything, including our own political department that pulls there, and I really enjoy that, really, it's my favorite lines, there's those, the boots are grounded, guys that are fixing things, and I saw, uh, Mr. Reynolds and, uh, Poller, I was happy to see that. So also members too, here, the, there that, uh, were riding for us, uh-huh. But anyway, I really wanted to take this opportunity to thank three of them, I'm sure I had to see it this year, as you can see, I have a bit of pride right now, so I had contacted, uh, Chief Dubinsky, because I, I worked there at the fire station on any of the, and this, I knew I wasn't going to get there, so I asked him, if I could somehow get closer to that, so I might have a watch, and he was out of town, but he still gave me a call, he called Mr. Joe Surt, who's part of the emergency management team, uh, he also saw this year's parade, um, he called me back later, we talked a little bit, he said, we get it, it has to be, get a call, and, uh, so we started heading, uh, then watch the parade, he said, you can second speed drive right up there to the barricade,